There we go. Now, now I'm on. I want to welcome you to the Mainland Planning Commission meeting. The first thing we would like to do is to ask you to stand for the invocation and the pledge that will be delivered by Mr. Neil Boatright.
Please bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we pray to you today for your grace and your forgiveness in our shortcomings. We ask that you give us knowledge and compassion to make decisions for our community. We thank you, Lord, for all the, all the blessings that you have provided Glen County and its citizens. Jesus, we pray to you because you are the great I am and you alone can make all things happen. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, but before I, before I move to the next thing, I wanted to tell you that if you are by any chance here for an agenda item about saved by grace, that has been removed from the agenda for tonight and will be taken up at a later time. Okay, the first thing I need to discuss with you is the, the meeting procedures. The planning staff presents the application request to the planning commission during the staff's report. This report evaluates how the proposal conforms to the Glen County zoning ordinance and other applicable regulations and conforms to the comprehensive plan when applied to zoning matters and ordinances. Applicants shall have the opportunity to present their requests to the planning commission. It is the responsibility of the applicants to make presentations on request and to address any conditions or factual findings with which they do not agree. Public hearings, public comments on public hearing items will be limited to thirty minutes for each opposing side with a maximum of five minutes allocated to each speaker. Comments are to be, are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allotted. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate a speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Okay. Do we have any announcements for the planning commission?
No, Chair, none of them.
All right, thank you. All right, the first item on our agenda is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held on August first, 2023. Commissioners?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to accept as presented. A second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? We approve. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is SP 5337 Circle K expansion, and Mr. Postal is here.
Maureen Postal, Glen County Planning and Zoning. The applicant's asking for site plan approval for the construction of a new diesel fueling canopy at the Circle K at 127 Flash Foods Road at exit twenty-nine. The proposed 2,544 square foot diesel canopy will be in the general location of where the existing abandoned Crystal Restaurant is, and that will, of course, be demolished before this is constructed. In accordance with state requirements, this project was reviewed by the Coastal Regional Commission, and there were no adverse findings found. This is the zoning map of the area, showing the Circle K in question right here with all properties and freeway commercial surrounding it. This is the proposed site plan, this existing Circle K and existing gas canopy. This red rectangle right here is the proposed diesel canopy, and there is a proposed right turn lane to be added if the diesel canopy is constructed. And this is the elevations of what the diesel canopy will look like. These are your possible motions, and the applicant is here tonight to answer any questions that you may have.
Commissioners, you have any questions of Mr. Postal? All right, would the applicant please come forward, introduce yourself, and ask us to, ask us to vote for your project?
Yes, please. Good afternoon. Thank you all for having us. I'm Ryan Poitras with CHO Consulting, representing Circle K as the civil engineer on this project. Maurice pretty well spelled it out. We've got some direction from GDOT at the front for the proposed right turn lane improvements to the intersection there to get truck traffic in and out. And then other than that, it's a simple demolition of the existing Crystal Store and then taking the abandoned parcel next to it, or undeveloped parcel next to it, and adding truck parking and the diesel canopy, so.
Okay. Commissioners, you have any questions?
Sir, I'm very familiar with that area. That's kind of going to be a very hard, sharp right turn to get in there with a semi truck.
Yep. And that, that's the reason for the, the intersection improvements up there. So we did do truck simulation turns to make sure we could get in, and GDOT is going to require us, you know, make those improvements, so.
Okay. Specifically, what are you going to have to do there?
As shown on the site plan there, we're going to have to include a right turn diesel lane as you come off of ninety-five there. There's already a pretty wide shoulder at that point, basically expanding the turn lane into that area, additional maybe ten feet or so of asphalt to pick up the rest and the required shoulder by GDOT, radius improvements on the front side there, including modification to the existing improvements that came in from the QT across the street, adding the, basically the island there in the center, the separate turn lane coming in, and then also radius improvements on the backside as you come through the intersection to turn onto Flash Foods Drive. That'll be increased from, I think it's existing twenty or twenty-five up to, I think we're showing thirty-five there.
Okay, the next question I have for you, sir, is across the back of this map, there's, I don't know, maybe a half a dozen, maybe fifteen parking spaces. Is that going to be, are you going to allow overnight people, people when they fill up the back in there and stay overnight? And the reason why I ask that question, right behind that store is Royal Oaks subdivision, and, you know, that's a fairly nice subdivision. I'd hate for those people to sit there and listen to diesel generators and diesel motors have to run all night.
Yeah, and typically, in the past, we've had, you know, we've had places that do allow that, we've had places that don't, just depending on where. If that's a consideration of you guys not to allow overnight parking, what we've done in the past is, we basically will put the, the store manager or facilities in charge of, you know, patrolling that, but we will have signage that says, you know, no twenty-four hour parking. We've had it basically, it's basically so that they can park, go and use the store, come back, get in their truck, fuel up, and leave. So it's not intended to be overnight. Every now and again, you know, somebody will try to do that, but we will sign it and have the facilities' manager patrol that area.
So is your intention for just that property in general to turn into a truck stop, or?
No, not, it's, there won't be any showers, overnight facilities or anything like that, laundry added to the existing Circle K store. So it's not going to be something like you'd see in a pilot where they'll come in and, you know, you've got the truck shop portion of it where you can buy parts or materials for your semi. You won't have the shower facilities. You won't have laundry. It's simply just adding the diesel fueling capacity to pick up truck traffic. It's already coming down seventeen there.
Any other questions? Okay, oh, you have another one?
Yes, I have one more question. There's several parcels of land past this, closer to ninety-five that are undeveloped. What, specifically, what is this going to do to the next guy that wants to develop?
Down past of?
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure of any plans right now to proceed down there. I know the road stops right at the end of the property line there that Calford holds currently. You know, I, I don't know if there are any future improvements, but the intention would be to allow them to come in and out without blocking that roadway. I know right now, I rode by there today, there's two semis parked in that curve line blocking the road as it is. So I would hope that the parking and the facilities for them would deter that from happening, just to give them another place to go. But it shouldn't, I, I would hope that it wouldn't affect anything beyond that point. The road should stay clear. They'll use the facility and turn back out.
Well, ju- just, I, I don't know you, and just to tell you a little bit about myself, I'm very pro-development, okay? This is going to be a nightmare. You got the motel that's right behind it. You got a little convenience store if you're facing it's going to be to the left of it. Semi trucks take a large area to turn, and I'm assuming y'all've thought out all the consequences to the motel behind, that's privately owned, the convenience store next to it is privately owned, and, you know, if you got twelve or fifteen trucks parked in the back and four or five trucks getting fuel at one time, that's going to be a hell of a traffic jam right there.
Yep. And like I said, that's, that's the reason for the improvements there, to get them in and out. The intent is to pick up the truck traffic that's already on Highway seventeen. You know, I wouldn't think it would add more to that area. You've already got trucks coming in and parking on Flash Foods Drive that are waiting.
I'm not even talking about Highway seventeen. I mean, we already, people that live there already know that's congested to the max. I'm just talking about the little area of people getting in and out from the private property onto the state right away.
Right, right.
It's going to be the next thing to a nightmare. That's, that's really all I have. I mean, that's it.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Anything else, Commissioners? This is a public hearing, and so our next step is to see if there is anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and speak against this plan. If so, please come to the podium and state your name. And sir, you have five minutes.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. My name is Wade Williams. I kind of live a little bit further down the street from that. I wasn't even aware this was happening, and I just happened to be here. I've worked several years in the gas industry. Worked with a jopper. I was operations manager. We dealt with gas stations. We took, we did the same project in places. Those parking spots will be for overnight parking. They will be for people commuting. They, he can say they won't be.
We'll make it, it's not. We'll make it, sir.
I'm going to tell you, with years in the experience, that's what I saw. The veracity of it, I can't argue it with. I can tell you what I saw for years in the industry. Also, that's not in this, is with diesel, there is DEF requirement. If you're familiar with that?
What, what requirement?
DEF. It's an acronym. It's an additive that all these trucks have to have. The rendering didn't show any pumps for that, and usually there's a massive tank that sits on property for that. I didn't see that in the drawing. Are you not offering DEF for this? Okay, it wasn't in the drawing.
Sir, sir, keep your, stay, stay with us.
Okay.
He can respond to.
That's fine. I just, there is an increase, as you know, there is an increased congestion that comes with that. There is an increased road maintenance that comes with that, and those parking lots do turn into overnight parking, or people who ride share, especially with a, with a motel being right there on site.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to come and speak in opposition? Is there, is there anyone else that would like to come and speak on behalf of this? Please come to the podium and state your name, address the commission. Okay, hearing none, seeing none. The public comment period is closed. Commissioners?
I have a question for staff. Mr. Maurice, did, was this, I, I find it very difficult in my mind to grasp that this was notified properly. This should have plenty of people in here from Royal Oaks and Satilla Shores.
It, it was notified according to both state and county law. I mean, we put a notice in the paper thirty days before. I put a sign out front thirty days before, and we sent a letter to the property owner, which is what state and local law require for site plans. Doesn't require letters to owners within two hundred feet like rezonings.
Okay.
Commissioners, anyone else have any questions? For Mr. Postal?
Madam Chair, I, I don't know personally, and I'm, I'm asking for the attorney's help here. How can I have this deferred till next month until we get more information on this before we make a really bad mistake here?
You can make a motion to the court.
Would that be proper?
It's one of your options up here on the possible motions list.
For the record here, and, and yes, Commissioner, you can offer a resolution or a motion to defer this matter to the next, to the next meeting. You would need four votes. We have five Commissioners here today.
Do I have to give a specific reason? Can I just say until we get further information? Would that, that acts actually, I knew I could defer, but I was wondering what procedure or what reason I needed to do that.
Additional information from the applicant or the community would be a, a supporting reason, certainly.
Thank you, sir.
Just a comment here, Neil. This apparently does meet the requirements for a site plan for the zoning that it is, and I agree with you. Last thing you want is, you know, fifteen trucks sitting out there idling all night, especially, and Royal Oaks is about, probably about five or six hundred feet away, the closest resident. But I guess what I'm getting at is with the opposition, if we get a lot from Royal Oaks, and we all listen to adjacent property owners, but if they do meet the requirements for site plan approval, I guess you have to have a pretty good reason to deny them on that. I'm just saying up front on this, other than the neighbors don't like it is what I'm getting at.
Would we not be better to, to, and, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying yes or no to deferral at this point in time, but what I am saying is the conditions that we're concerned about, about the no, the no sleepover, and i- is that not something that we can just put into our recommendation and pass this site plan?
I, I, I'm concerned specifically about the parking spaces in the back. I, I agree with the gentleman in the very back. That will become overnight parking if you know any overnight sleeping areas. If you know anything about truck stops whatsoever, that is what's going to happen. And the next thing is, I'm concerned about the people, the people that have developments past this development. They're going to have a hard time developing their property. McDonald, I'm just using a, McDonald's is not going to buy that property because you literally, they're not going to fight the traffic to get in and out. No, no service industry would, would ever consider that property further down, and there's, I'm going to say there's three or four pieces of property that can be developed on that interchange. There's a pretty significant piece of property there that needs to be developed, and.
What would the purpose of the deferral be, though? I mean, additional information, but it's, it's been noticed. I mean, what's, what's the, what's the idea going forward if we defer?
Well, just, just, I, I.
I mean, they've already been, they've already been notified. I mean, are we going to notify them again?
I'm going to find it very hard to believe that people in that community know about this and are not here by the droves. I just, I really find that hard. I, I'm, I'm not disputing what Mr. Postal said about what he did, but I do know from time to time, we put those, our county staff puts those signs out, and they go missing a day or two after they get put out. And, and I'm not specifically saying this is what happened in this case. We all know the folks from Royal Oaks.
Oh, yeah, they have a very strong homeowners association.
Yes, yes.
Very vocal.
And, and I, I just find it hard to believe they are not here in droves over this. This is a pretty significant change, going from a gas station to a, this is basically going to be a truck stop at this point.
I, I guess, what, what would make you feel more comfortable passing this without deferring it? Would it be, well, besides saying no overnight parking, about the only other thing you'd have to do would be to shorten those spaces back there where you couldn't have truck parking overnight or long term?
Who's going to monitor it, Gary? I, I understand that.
Exactly.
And listen, I, I value your opinion. You are very knowledgeable, and, and, and I value deeply your opinion. But who's going to police that?
It, well, exactly. I mean, that's a problem we do have.
If we sit here and say no overnight parking, Mr. Postal, until a citizen calls and, and calls code enforcement, they don't know if that trucker just got fuel and just backed in there, it's going to sleep the rest of the night, and his reefer truck, trailer and diesel truck is sitting there and ran all night long. And I used to live in Royal Oaks. I wouldn't wanna hear that truck sitting there. There's no truck stop on that side.
No.
And, and it's been my understanding that our commission, our commission that we have today don't want any more truck stops or anything on that interchange. And, and, and I'm just asking for more time to get more information to find out how we need to proceed with this.
Could we ask the applicant to come back up, please?
Mr. Dawson?
He's gonna say something.
Yes, I was just gonna ask Mr. Postal, and I apologize, I came a little bit late, so I missed the presentation.
Sure.
Uh, but I wanted to know from the county standpoint, did you find any issues with this? And I see that it's recommended by the county to approve it, uh, but did you see anything that stood out to you to, um, you know, deny this? Or, you know, that were called issues?
Uh, the county's traffic engineer, Eric Granados, did review this project, and he didn't find any issues. I rely on his expertise as a county's traffic engineer.
Okay, sir.
M- m- Mr. Dawson, let, let me just say this to you. I'm very familiar with that area.
Right.
And one of the things that, when I looked at this, one of the things that got brought to my attention was, I also drive a semi truck in my construction business. You would have to basically do a U-turn with a semi truck, eighty-foot-long truck in this building to come off of seventeen and go back down that access road to where he's talking about building. That, that's a pretty tight, that's a pretty tight hairpin turn in this, in this room with a semi truck. You got a motel, you got a motel in the back, the traffic's coming in and out of the motel. And, and it's gonna be a tight turn. They're gonna have to be in the lane unless there's some extensive changes done to that intersection. They're gonna be in the lane of the people coming from the motel, the people from, um, the next door gas station. There, there, there's no, I mean, it would be almost impossible. They'd be a heck of a better truck driver than I am, and I'm a novice truck driver, to get in and make that turn. And.
Okay, sir.
And I'm certainly not an engineer, sir. I just, I was born and raised in that area, and I know we have a hell of a congestion because of semi trucks now, things that wasn't fore-thought out. And, and I, I just wanna make sure that this is thought out properly before we, you know, forward on this.
Oh, I understand.
A- a- and I do, uh, and I'm, I'm not anti-development. Everybody in this room knows me. I, I'm for doing what you wanna do with your property. I feel like that's your right to do it. But this is just, this just sends up red flags to me.
The question I have for you is, uh, should we approve this site plan? It would be with conditions, and one of those conditions would be, you know, no sleepover. Uh, and, and how, and how would you manage that? I mean, because if you commit to doing that and we pass this, uh, I need to feel, I need to feel like you, that you, that you are able to make that happen.
Right, correct.
And someone said something about shortening the spaces back there. I, you know, what, what do you have to say about that?
Well, I will say you have multiple options. If, if that's the direction you decide to go, we can either A, uh, sign it, have the store police it. If that's not good enough, we can remove the parking spaces. That's a concession we've made before because of that requirement. I don't see that that would kill or make or break the site for them. It may.
The, the, the parking spaces in the back that, that Mr., that, uh, Mr. Boatright is concerned about?
Right. And like I said, we typically, what we've done in the past is we've put signs out there that say, you know, no overnight parking, two-hour truck parking maximum, uh, you know, and the store manager at that point is supposed to patrol that area.
And, and, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but you and I both know that doesn't happen. You know, they, that, you know, it's okay for, we'll, we'll let these people go, but I know this guy, and I'm gonna let him stay back there. And it, and I understand what, what Mr. Boatright is saying. It, it is a concern for the neighborhood that's there, for the people sleeping in the hotel.
Correct.
So, so you, you could do without that parking in the back. Is that what you're saying?
I would have to talk to Circuke to see if they'd be willing to do that, but if that's a condition that you guys make, then that would be, you know, what we'd have to do.
So, if we, if we, so I don't know where we are now. I mean, you've heard what he had to say. So, you're, you're saying that if we had, if we made that a condition, then, then what for you?
I would have to go back to the client to ensure that they're willing to meet that condition, um, as far as removing them. Now, they're, they're absolutely willing to make it, you know, no twenty-four-hour parking, two-hour only. We've got one right now in Poole, Georgia, that we just did the same thing with. We signed it, put two-hour maximum parking on it, and that was it. So, it's, it's up to you guys.
Okay, I, I, I'll just put it right on the line. I'm not voting for this tonight. I'm not gonna vote to pass this. I'm not saying I won't ever vote for it, but I would like to talk to my county commissioner, and I would like to talk to both of our, to, to, personally, I'd like to talk to both of my at-large county commissioners about this. And, um.
What about, uh, deferring and to allow the applicant to ask his people if they would eliminate the large truck parking in the back or, you know, shorten it to where you couldn't allow it? And, and, 'cause if that's, if that's a deal killer, uh, I, I feel like we ought to know that upfront, and, uh.
That, that's what I'm okay with, but just, just deferring it, I mean, it's gone through the process. And, you know, they didn't show up. I mean, this is the process, but something like that, I'm, I'm okay with. And just kinda come back to us and see, you know, what they're willing and what they're not willing to do. That makes sense to me.
And, and I would be in agreement with that as well.
Yeah, well, yeah, since, since you're, since you, you have to go back and talk to someone anyway. I, I'm more comfortable at this point in time with a deferral.
And I will add, I mean, if, if that is, I, I just need something to take to them to say, hey, this is what was discussed. If, if there's no direction based on that, that you can or you cannot. If there's a you cannot, then it would be up to them to kill the site or move forward without it. But just to say, what do you wanna do, I, I'm not sure what they're gonna.
I mean, that, that's where I have a little bit of struggle with this too, because,
Yeah.
you know, we're, we're, we're bringing that up. Well, can you eliminate this? We don't have anyone from the neighborhood requesting that they eliminate this.
Yeah.
So, that, that's the, that's the thing. We have one. You're right. Yeah, we have one.
Uh, I feel like you're gonna need some truck parking, 'cause some of these people might need to go in the convenience store and, you know, shop, and you're gonna leave their truck at the gas pump the whole time.
You would have to at that point. Yeah, you would have to.
But, uh, yeah, being able to control that would be neither eliminating it or having it in some sort of fashion where it was very temporary.
I mean, we could even, we could even do a, a, some kind of special buffer on that backside a- a- against the neighborhood over here.
Yeah.
On the other side of the retention part.
G- Gary, um.
Right here.
Yeah, you, you said that's four or five hundred feet from there to that? No, 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 no. I, I was looking at, uh, I, I was just gonna say, I don't think that is, sir. I was looking at this over here.
And, and, and I, I, I'm gonna tell y'all. I, I'm, in my mind, I have pretty good common sense. This sends red flags up to me. I don't believe this was proper, this was noticed properly, or the Royal Oaks people would be in here by the droves.
I believe you're right.
Uh, now, now, I'm telling you, this is one time I'm gonna stand up for a homeowners' association and say, I'm not voting for this. And that'll probably be the only time you ever hear that from Neil Boatright. This is not, something on this sends red flags up to me.
And Commissioner Boatright, um, and, and you have problems also with the, uh, the way it's designed on the Highway seventeen?
No, I'm, I'm not necessarily worried about how the, 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 um, diesel lane off of seventeen. I'm worried about when they get off of seventeen, that right-hand turn they've gotta make in a semi truck to get onto that frontage road, Mr. Dawson.
Okay. Something more than a thirty-five-foot radius is.
That's tight. That's tight for a semi truck.
Yeah, for a big truck.
Yes, sir. That's tight.
And I can provide a, a truck turn simulation showing that it, it gets through there if need be.
Yeah, but what if it's three or four or five or twelve trucks coming in at one time? What if a truck comes off ninety-five and he looks over at, um, what's the new queue? What's the TQ or the, whatever the new one is, or the Blue Beacon or whatever, and they say, oh, that's full? And then three or four or five trucks pull in there at one time?
I mean, I, I can't help. They've gotta follow the traffic law.
I understand that, but that's the kinda things we have to look at. Um, we've had enough of non-thought-out growth in Glen County.
We're here, not here. Is that right?
Well, this is McDonald's right here. Okay, this is, this is McDonald's here. And you're, you're, you're probably right, and this is all, this frontage road, all this development right here is, i- i- is fed by that frontage road.
That, that's a ways, that's a ways away from Royal Oaks, though. Your Royal Oaks is as yellow down here on, uh, I don't even know.
Truck parking's about eight hundred feet from the.
It measures eight hundred feet?
Well, from those blocks right there, yeah. Based on GIs.
I mean, I'm, I'm there again. I'm, I'm under, I'm under the impression that it's been properly noticed. They had an opportunity to come, um, one by accident, but, um, and it.
Mr. Postal, when we notice, when we notice the public, do we just use the yellow sign? Or do we actually put that in the newspaper so people can?
Yeah, starting on July first, a new state law requires us to put an ad in the newspaper thirty days before the meeting, the yellow sign, and a, a letter to the property owner. But of course, the property owner knows this is happening. But yes, we do put it in the paper now. In the past, we hadn't, but in the past, site plans only required the yellow sign twelve days before.
Okay, so it's, it's, it's become more like a zoning notification.
It was, it is a new state law, started, started on July first.
Mr. Attorney, one more question for you, for, for me, please, from me. Um, would it be proper for me not to vote for this just because we don't need any more truck stops on that interchange?
There are a list of criteria for site plan approval. Um, traffic is, is one of the, uh, items to be considered. Adequate provisions made for ingress, egress, and traffic control. You know, your, um, decision on a vote is, is not, um, uh, you're, you're not required to state a reason.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioners, do I have a motion?
I'll, uh, step out and try one on this. Recommend approval of SP fifty-five thirty-seven with the stipulation of no, uh, overnight parking on the site.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Motion fails. Another motion?
L- 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 listen, guys, I'm gonna say this one more time. I'm not necessarily against this. I just want more information.
I understand.
Yes, sir. I, I just, I, I want to do my due diligence. I have not done it yet. This, this, this came in under the radar, and when I got here tonight, I actually saw it last night, and I thought, huh! And then I got here and I started studying it, and I started looking at it, and I listened to the presentation. This sends a bunch of red flags for me. And let's, let's consider deferring this until next month, until we can all get a better grasp on this. And, and I make a.
So, I'll, I'll put a motion.
I'll make a motion to defer action on SP fifty-five thirty-seven until the next meeting, next month's meeting.
And could you add to allow the applicant to go back and discuss the, uh, parking situation?
Well, absolutely. They're gonna do that anyway. I don't, I don't think I have to tell him that, to do that, do I? I, I mean, I'm, I'm asking, do I need to, to instruct him to do that?
Well, I was just thinking that is, that, that would be one of the reasons for the motion, uh, I mean, for the deferral is.
Okay, um, so, I'll restate it. I moved to defer action on SP fifty-five thirty-seven until this, until the next meeting, and I asked the applicant to go back and ask, could his owners, his developers, um, not park in the parking spaces at the back of the development overnight?
So, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
So, we have a motion and second, commissioners? So, we have four in opposed? The motion passes. Motion to deferral passes. Thank you, sir. Okay, the next item on our agenda is, uh, SP five, five, four, five, Everhome Home, Everhome Suites Site Plan Approval. And Mr. Postal is here.
The applicant's asking for site plan approval for the construction of a new hotel at three-ten Gateway Center in the Canal Crossing subdivision. Uh, the project is located in a planned development where the maximum building height is only thirty-five feet. The proposed hotel will be four stories and have a building height of fifty-one feet. The applicant has submitted a variance request to get that fifty-one feet, and that will be heard at the Board of Appeals meeting on this coming Thursday. This is zoning map showing where the property is. Uh, this is McDonald's down here. This is the new Peachtree Medical Center. This is the site plan showing the proposed building and, uh, the parking. This is the conceptual elevations for the fifty-one-foot hotel. And, uh, these are your possible motions, and, uh, Mr. Hightower from Robertson Civil Engineering is here tonight to speak on the application.
Um, if I'm, if I'm seeing correctly, uh, Mr. Postal, that is going to face Canal Road, is that right?
No, no, it's not on Canal Road at all. This is Gateway Center. This is Canal Crossing.
Back, okay.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's not on Canal at all.
Thank you.
It's to the back of.
Okay.
The building's on Canal.
Thank you.
And I do have a question, Mr. Postal.
Yes.
Now, they would not have to get approval on the variance for the fifty-one, fifty-one feet first before they come in for the.
No, there's no requirement in county ordinance that you do one or the other first. But you, as, as I put in the motions, you could state a condition, and they're saying that this won't become effective unless they get that approval from the Board of Appeals.
Okay, alright.
Sir, would you like to come forward?
Good evening, commissioners. Jake Hightower, not Jake Lemmings, uh, from Robertson Civil Engineering, here to ask that you approve the site plan as presented. To answer Commissioner Gibbs' question, so the, uh, Canal Road is, is in, on the other side of other buildings right here, so it is kinda facing this direction, and that's their main entrance. Uh, and then you can see Gateway at the top and the Canal Crossing, so, uh, that's the, uh, the way it's oriented. There are four other ho- sorry, three other hotels, um, in the vicinity. They're four stories, and one's actually taller than fifty-one feet. Uh, but again, according to the PD, that was what the requirement was. So, um, we were instructed by county to go through the variance process, so we're on Thursday's agenda to go through and get that approval as well. And, uh, also available to answer any questions.
Commissioners, do you have any questions with Mr. Hightower? Okay, uh, this too is a public hearing. Uh, is there anyone in the audience who would like to come and speak against this project? If so, please come forward, state your name, and address the commission. Alright, is there anyone else in the audience who would like to come forward and speak on behalf of this project? If so, please come forward, state your name, and address the commission. Hearing none, seeing none. The public comment period is closed. Uh, commissioners?
Madam Chairman, I move to approve S P fifty-five forty-five with the following condition. The site plan will become effective when variance application Z V five-five-six-one is approved by the Board of Appeals.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Okay, we are unanimous, motion passed, thank you. And Mr. Chris is here to present the King Rezone.
Good evening, Christopher Carey, Glen County Planning and Zoning. Before you tonight, we have a rezone for five hundred Touchstone Parkway, uh, to essentially allow for storage building and to house equipment to maintain the land and continued use of hunting on the property. Uh, the property is split zone, so the front of the property is zoned M twelve adjacent to the right of way and the applicant is requesting to rezone the property all to forest agriculture. Here is the site. Here's a contour of the property, there is quite a bit of wetlands on the property. And as you see, uh, there's an M twelve in the front of the property and F A to the rear.
Chris?
Yes, sir.
Could you back that slide up just a moment? Does this, do these property owners own on both sides of the heavy black line?
Yes, sir.
They own F A property and the M twelve property?
Yes, sir, it's all one parcel, uh, twenty-five, uh, twenty-five acres. And here's survey of the property. And here are your possible motions and the applicant is here as well.
Anyone have any questions of, uh, Mr. Chris? Okay, would the applicant like to come forward and state your name and ask us to, uh, consider this?
Thank you, Madam Chairman and Commissioners. My name's Robbie King and, uh, I just wanted to get it rezoned to farm agricultural so I could actually put a storage shed closer than about a thousand foot off of Touchstone Parkway. It would actually position the building about two hundred foot off of Touchstone Parkway if we're allowed to do this.
Mr. King?
Yes, sir.
When you, um, when, Mr. Postal, I mean, Chris, I'm sorry. When Chris mentioned, he said you'd like to hunt on this land, is that for your personal, just personal, family, you and whoever to be able to hunt?
Yes, it is.
Okay, perfect. Yes, sir.
And you live on that property now, is that correct?
No, this land has no structures on it whatsoever and because it was dual-zoned when we bought this, it didn't show up on the records, I don't think, until we got in touch with Chris to try and find out what we had to do to get a permit to put a building on this property. That's when we found out it had actually been zoned on the front part right on Touchstone for an M twelve, single residential. And we don't want to put any residents in there, we're just gonna keep it, um, farm agricultural.
Thank you, Mr. King.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. King? Thank you, sir. Thank you. Um. This is, uh, also a, a public hearing, so, uh, I would like to see if there's anyone in the audience who would like to come and speak against this. If so, please come forward and state your name and address the commission.
Good evening, my name's Marlon Grover, I live at two-thirty-two Sierra Drive, I just have a question. It's gonna be for hunting, the direction, my house back the property where he's gonna, uh, use for hunting and whatnot, I just want to make sure that they're not hunting towards the back of my house, bullets gonna be flying. Can anybody explain how they're gonna do that?
Sir, would you like to come back up and, and address that?
Yes, it's probably mostly gonna be bow hunting and if it was, any firearms, it'd be small caliber.
Okay, oh, I guess I'd never realized it had anything to do with, with hunting at all, uh, with, with what I had to read. This is the first time I've heard about the fact that you were gonna be using it for hunting. Are you currently using it for hunting?
No.
Well, okay, let's, let's back up right here just a minute. The back portion of this property already is forest agricultural, so he can, he can hunt on that already.
Okay, alright.
Okay, that, he's not asking to do anything really, uh, he can already do it.
Okay.
Okay, he's not asking us for anything special. Mr. King can hunt on his property, don't matter if it's one acre, twelve acres, or five thousand acres, it's F A property.
Okay. Thank you, I didn't know that.
Yes, ma'am.
So did, did that answer your question, sir?
Not really. I'm just more concerned, I'm just more concerned about ammo coming towards my house, that's all. Um, cause if, well, I can't tell it from right there. But, uh, there's a ditch, a easement, and once you cross the ditch, you own his property. So it's my house and a couple of houses along his, so if they're gonna be hunting, um. I'm just concerned about stray bullets. That's all I'm concerned about.
And we understand that, that fully, I, I live in an area very similar to this, there's a hunting club all the way around me. But if it's forest agricultural, um, they, they can, I mean, there's not anything we can do, it's already forest agricultural. Half of the land's already forest agricultural. They may be hunting there now, I don't, I have no idea, I don't even, I don't know Mr. King, first time I think I've ever seen him in my life tonight. But forest agricultural, they can hunt on that and there's not anything we can do about it.
Okay.
And it's already there, he's not asking for, he's not asking for anything, I don't even know why he would bring the hunting up, to be honest with you, because he can already do it.
Okay. Okay.
And, and I have sympathy for you, sir, because I live in an area, uh, in Brookman, very similar to your situation.
Okay.
But the, the law is the law, yeah, it looks like you're a man of the law and he has every right to hunt on an F A piece of property.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak against this project? If so, please come to the podium and state your name and address the commission. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to come forward and speak on behalf of this project? Please come to the podium and state your name.
Thank you, uh, my name is Katie Brown, I'm an associate broker with Berkshire Hathaway here locally. I helped facilitate this deal and I'm also the daughter-in-law of the Kings. Um, when we purchased or negotiated the deal, the Q Public site doesn't mention anything about having two zonings and so it was on public record saying it was just all zoned as forest agriculture. So I just wanted to point that out and see if that's something we might, could get fixed with the Q Public site so that properties that have multiple zonings, it's disclosed to the public. Um, and we might not be in this situation. But the goal of being here is to put a metal building on the property, um, and the part that's zoned for a mobile home and we're told currently it would have a concrete ba-, or a concrete pad, be a four-bay green metal building, um, and have electricity running to it and it would store equipment such as tractors and things of that nature to help maintain the land. Um, but the M two or M twelve zoning will only permit us to put a mobile home and we're wanting to do something that's more permanent and would add more value than a mobile home. So that's all.
Any questions of Ms. Brown?
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak on behalf of this? Hearing none, seeing none, the public comment period is closed. Mr. Boatright? What were you going to say or ask?
I, I would just like to say personally, I think anytime we move a piece of property from M twelve to F A is a great thing. I'd just like to say that.
Okay.
I'll do that every time.
Alright, uh, Commissioners?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Z M five-five-three-two as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Commissioners, how do you vote? It is unanimously approved, thank you. Alright, the next item on our agenda is, uh, Z M five-five-four-four, one-thirty Capital Square, uh, Planned Development Minor Revision. Mr. Postal? No, this is Mr. Chris, excuse me.
Good evening, Christopher Carey, Glen County Planning and Zoning. Again, before you tonight, we have, uh, Z M five-five-four-four, uh, P D revision. Uh, the applicant is requesting to amend the P D to allow surface mining and mini-storage up to five acres on parcel zero-three, zero-three, three, five, one. Uh, the applicant is making this request due to unintended changes to the P D text in the most recent revision, Z M five-three-nine-eight, which was approved by the Board of Commissioners on April twentieth of this year.
I thought we'd already done this.
Yes, there, there's a minor revision that the applicant needed to make. When he rezoned the property, he used, uh, an older P D text, which changed some of the uses, so he's putting those uses back in and it was an unintended, um, action that occurred.
It was one of those unintended consequences that I always talk about?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Here is the site. Highlighted in, uh, orange is the parcel and that is where the rezoning would occur. Uh, highlighted in blue is the current location of the lake or pond. And here's a close-up. Also showing the proposed, uh, buffer, which was already approved in the previous. And as you see, here's the old versus the new, uh, in the old P D, it added landfill and extraction of natural materials and, uh, again, that is highlighted. And then in the new text, you have also the dredging and five acres of mini-storage and/or boat and R V storage to be a permitted use.
So that's basically what this is about, is, is adding storage? And we didn't approve, we didn't have storage before when we approved this, is this correct?
Uh, storage is approved, so if you see, uh, in pod A, um, the pod language was removed, so that's why they're adding it back.
Okay, alright, okay.
And here are your possible motions. And the applicant is here as well. There is a possibility, so if you look at the new, it is listed, the same usage is listed in, uh, permitted and special and conditional use and if you would make a revision or an amendment to revise the text to show it in either section. Not both. And the applicant is here as well.
Any questions of, uh, Mr. Chris? Alright, uh, would the applicant like to come forward, introduce himself?
Good evening, Commissioners. What Chris was trying to say is the applicant messed up last time. I took, this thing has had so many amendments.
Would you state your name?
I'm sorry, my name's Cameron Owens.
Thank you.
I'm a part-owner of this property. There's been lots of revisions over the years and several very recently and, you know, me, me being econo-minded, I like to do my own rezonings and Jake has been laughing at me ever since I made this mistake. Uh, I copied and pasted from the wrong previous P D and I was successful in getting the, the dredging and surface mining, but I eliminated our pre-approved, um, mini-storage from the previous P D. So I'm just here trying to fix what I messed up. We're not doing anything different than what we originally were, I just need to get it corrected because it, you know, has implications for potential buyers and if we possibly use it, so I ask that you, um, give me a little grace on my little mix-up here.
Commissioners, you have any questions? Of Mr. Owens? Okay, uh, this is a public hearing, uh, not many people left in here, so is there anyone who would like to come and speak against this? If so, please come to the podium and state your name. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to come and speak in favor of this? Hearing none, seeing none, the public comment period is, public hearing period is closed. Uh, Commissioners?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to recommend approval of Z M five-five-four-four as presented.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, so all in favor?
Are we, are we supposed to decide whether it's a permitted use or a special condition use?
Yes. Yeah, so if you want, well, you already made a motion and a second, um, but if you could make a motion to allow it to be a permitted use with the condition that it is a permitted use, um, so that way there's no confusion on whether it's a permitted or special slash conditional use.
So do we need to withdraw the motion that was just made and start over again?
Yes, Madam Chair, if that motion could be withdrawn, that would be best.
And, and what, what's the difference if we choose either one, could you go over that with us?
If you make it a permitted use, they wouldn't need to, they would be able to just do site plan approval. If you made it a special or conditional use, they would need two public hearings, one before you all and one before the Board of Commissioners.
Have you given us a motion to follow?
Not this time.
That's not fair.
If you could make a motion, I believe, uh, Mr. Owens, if you could come back up, uh, and clarify, but I believe it was a permitted use in the prior zoning, is that correct?
Okay, first, we need to withdraw the motion that we have.
I'd like to withdraw my previous motion on Z M fifty-five forty-four.
And do we need to vote on that?
No.
Okay. Alright, tell us what we need to say, Mr. Owens.
I'm not really sure what to tell you to say, but it was approved as a, so mini-storage was an approved permitted use um, because this property was highway commercial and mini-storage is a conditional use of that zoning. So we came back before I messed this up and asked that it be permitted, that conditional use be permitted on this property before. So that's where we were when we, before I messed it up.
Okay, well, it says here, the applicant is requesting to amend the P D to allow surface mining and mini-storage up to five acres, so.
As a, but we need to say as a permitted use, is that correct?
Yes.
And perhaps for clarity, if I make, Commissioner, um, this would also mean striking the highlighted text under Section three B, special conditional uses, because that's where the language is repeated. I think that's right, is that right, Chris?
Yes.
So it could be a, um, motion to accept the, um, to, to accept the, uh, planned development as presented. to accept the, uh, plan development as presented, provided, with the condition that Section 3B, the highlighted sentence that starts additionally, is struck. And what that leaves is the, um, storage and dredging is a permitted use. Does that make sense?
Yeah, uh, I think I, I follow that. You wanna do it? Go ahead. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ZM 5544 with the condition that, uh, Paragraph 3B, the highlighted, uh, sentence starting with additionally, be struck.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? It's passed unanimously.
I don't understand any of that.
Okay, and, uh, so now we have, need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Alright.